This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Zephyr Hills City Council meeting is Monday, March 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Ricardo, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Monson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
All right. At this time, we're going to have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all rise and Kendall before we give an invocation.
Let's pray, Father, we adore you this evening. We honor you as Lord. Thank you for the gift of salvation. Thank you for the many blessings you bestow on us. One of those blessings is living and working in this community amongst these businesses and these people. I pray that you would bless our law enforcement, bless our firefighters, and be a part of this evening. Everything that's discussed, every decisions that's made, may it honor you, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kendall. Appreciate you doing that for us. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. And if I could ask at this time to silence your electronics. Make sure mine are. At the beginning of the meeting, as we had set aside time for citizen comments on items that are not necessarily specific to an agenda item. So at this time, I will see if we have any citizen comments, and I will ask Ricardo.
Yes, sir. First, I have a few signed up. Rod Neal.
And I will ask you, as you come forward, you need to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comments.
Hey, my name's Rod Neal. How are you guys doing tonight? I represent Masonic Lodge, Zephyr Lodge 198, and we've had some issues with our traffic in front of our lodge. It's been hit three times in the last few years, and we've got significant property damage. I was forwarded the draft of the traffic study and went through it, and I noticed the engineer had recommended no changes. Our D-Mile kids were out in front of our building the other day, doing what they normally do. And there was an accident out there, and if they had been standing closer to the road, we might not be having the same conversation tonight. So we would really ask that you take strong consideration of some type of barriers. Four-way stop would be great. The kids from the high school really think that's like the drag strip through there. And once they hit that curve, centrifugal force does nothing but force them into our building. We've lost our sign multiple times. And that's not a cheap sign. It's almost 10 grand. So the traffic study that I noticed says our property damage is 3,500. That's what the insurance will pay. That's not what it cost us to replace it. So we would ask that you guys would discuss that and take it under consideration, and please help us keep lives safe, if you guys would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. And I know we've had, we've discussed this a little bit before, and I'm gonna let the city manager kind of address where we're at, because we were thinking of a couple of solutions, but.
Yeah, the, the traffic study or the analysis was done. He's correct that it did not, it recommended no corrections at this time. This is the preliminary report. We expect the final report to be in tomorrow, and there should be some safety recommendations on that. Stuff that we've talked about is potentially flashing, some flashing signs or some indicators that there's a stop sign ahead. And so until I get that final report, I can't say here's what the recommendations are at this time.
Oh, Mr. President, if I could, just a quick question. Creating physical barriers such as a guardrail, for example, is, you know, it's not like the, the folks from the Sonic Lodge could purchase that and install it because it's in county right-of-way, right?
Correct. So I know where you're going. About two years ago, I think we had a conversation with the representative from the lodge. Asked us to put a guardrail in. We told him that we would need an easement or some property because the right-of-way is so tight there. We wouldn't be able to get the clearance of the guardrail from the edge of the road, and our request was denied, so we did not put a guardrail in.
You know, one of the things I've noticed is in this report, the, a lot of the accidents are right at the intersection. But the problem with the lodge, I think, is traffic coming north on the curve. So it's not really, I, I think the intersections north of where their problem is, I don't know how that impacts it. I think, you know, it would be helpful, I guess, when we get that, the, some of the recommendations, then we could probably go into it further. But if it would require right-of-way or something, or an easement, you know, I think that would be something we'd have to ask you to consider, so.
So the traffic was flowing north? There is an issue?
The issue is when people come onto their property and hit things, they're coming from the north, they're coming from the south to the north.
They're going south to north, they would hit and go into the opposite, they'd go into the northeast intersection or corner of the intersection, which is opposite of.
What I'm saying is they don't even get to the intersection sometimes. They hit their property first.
Once that I've seen.
Are you saying that all the, all the accidents, the cars are thrown from North Avenue intersection onto their property?
I'll have to verify, but we asked them to look at the intersection, not wrecks that occurred as they were driving.
I mean, is that, I mean, is that an issue? I mean.
The challenge is gravity, mass. When they come around that corner and they lose control, which they do, the car invariably spins to the right, and that pulls it right into our building, takes out the whole front of the building. This last time, it took out the sign, took out the front porch, took out the chairs on the front porch, and took out the door.
Is it, what I'm getting at is these, this drawing shows.
It's driving north, it shows to north, and they hit that corner and they're going too fast.
Right, and they hit the intersection here in the, in the paperwork.
All right, I'll have, if I can interrupt one second. If I can, if I can, I need to go back to Kimley Horn and have a conversation because I thought the issue we were working on was the intersection and crashes at the intersection.
Well, I think it's both, but what.
Yeah, but I don't think that they studied people driving north on.
I think the problem is you come down, if you come up, there's a slight hill coming north on 12th Street. Not a hill, but, and then you, it's got a curve in it, and I think that's creating some of the problem before they get to the intersection.
I don't think the study studied that, though. That's what I'm saying. This was, this was looking at the crashes at the intersection. So I need to verify, because that's what my understanding was of the issue was, is that there were crashes at the intersection. So we asked them specifically to look at the intersection.
Our crashes are all high-speed crashes, and they spin into the corner and hit the front of the building.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, absolutely. It's a drag, you come over that hill, they don't expect the corner. As soon as they hit that corner, they lose control, and then it's loop-de-loop-de-loop right into.
So maybe some of the recommendations will try and control.
A barrier would be great. I mean, that would stop it. That's their car, not our property.
Well, let, let us get that, that phase, and then we'll come back. You can come back and visit.
Just come here and keep mixing the soup until we get the right flavor.
All right, well, you can come back and visit, and, and we'll talk more.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah. And I was looking at the map here. I mean, the curve, if you're heading north, the centrifugal force would take them on the opposite side of the road, as the city manager said. And there's a guardrail there already, if I remember right.
There's a guardrail there.
Yeah. I don't know if they're bouncing off the guardrail and coming back across, or what the deal is, but we'll get, we'll wait till that, you know, comes back.
I just have one question for Billy. Billy, if they were to give us the easement, we could put one in there then, at that point, correct?
Uh, we could, but. I need to have a conversation because what I just heard now is opposite of what we've been working towards. We've been working to protect what would be the northwest corner of the building. But what I'm hearing is it's when traffic's flowing north before they get to the intersection.
I think it's both. I think, you know, you need to look at the whole.
Right. No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is the study that we have and the direction we've been working on has been the intersection and the southwest corner of the building. So what I just heard was that it's traffic flowing north, losing control, and hitting the building, which is different than somebody running the stop sign at 12 and, you know, blocking it, or, what's it called? Competing traffic or failure to yield the right-of-way and causing a crash. So I think we have to have a whole nother direction on what this study says or what we looked at.
All right.
Do like a phase.
All right, and thank you for coming back on that, too, Rod. Ricardo, next.
I also have former Mayor Cliff McDuffie.
Cliff McDuffie, 6130 Seventeenth Street, Zephyr Hills, Florida. Just in case you don't know, I want to talk about the same thing. I live about six blocks from this intersection. I do not go through that intersection. Sunday mornings, I may, because nobody's out there. It is a dangerous intersection. Other than the fact that we had kids in our, our lodge now, and that's a possibility that somebody's gonna get hurt. We have had two other organizations that meet with us. One of those organizations, the majority of them are almost as old as I am, and it's pretty old, and they don't drive too well, but they do drive. And when you're coming out of our lodge, the traffic coming north, you, you can't see around that curve. And with headlights on, you're blinded when you do come out. It's, it's too simple and logical thinking, anyway. I know what government's like, so it's not always logical, and I understand that. But I do appreciate the fact that you all have done a study. I'd like to know when they did the study. Did they do it during school hours when the kids were getting off school? You can't even get through the intersection? Probably not. I remember when I first came here, little building on Fifth Avenue. First thing I did was ask for a left turn light there, and they wouldn't let us have one. It still needs one, because you can't see the traffic coming at you from the other side. Anyway, I've been in charge of this building now for probably 10 or 12 years, and this is the biggest issue I've had to face. Constant insurance handling. We've had some people who've almost been killed there, but not totally. We just feel that that needs to be a four-way stop, if nothing else. It's probably a worse intersection than Seventh Street and North Avenue. Because when you come around that curve, it's deadly. We are going to, we're in the process right now, putting a fence up, and that fence is comprised of telephone poles. It's three feet deep, three feet high. That will stop a car. But we'd rather have the city do something. We understand. I don't think we're through with this yet, but I know my, my three minutes are up, so I'll let you all get on with your, your meeting, and we'll be back to see you. It's good to see all of you, believe me. I do miss it sometimes.
Mr. President, could, uh.
Go ahead.
Miss Mayor, could I ask you a quick question, please? You know, right now, the parking lot that you use is on the south side of the lodge, right? So has there ever been any thought given to creating an exit on the backside of the building? That, that folks can make a right onto North Avenue going right? I'm sorry, what was that?
We have a, a car gate on the backside of the property.
Okay, so you already do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
It's accessible from the backside.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, you know, we're gonna have them look at that again, that even before the intersection, so. And we haven't got the report back. That won't come until tomorrow anyways on some.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay.
I have Nick Walton.
Nick Walton, 2431 Mirador Lane, Apartment 108, Wesley Chapel, 33544. Good to see y'all again. For those of you who don't know, I'm with the Sarah Vandenberg Tennis Foundation and the Executive Director. We serve over 500 students in 12 schools and three summer camps every year, 100% free for the kids. Most of you guys have seen us grow over the last five years. And we have a program we're especially proud of that I want to give you some updates on tonight. It's called our Ambassador Program. These are our high school leaders who train for free at the tennis center and then volunteer over 500 hours a year collectively in our after-school program. This year, the group is 13 students strong from five different schools. In the past year and a half or two years, we've added college prep counseling. We've added service volunteering in organizations that are not ours, like the Pioneer Museum of Dade City. So we're starting to branch out and really serve the community outside of our programs. We're really excited for Miami Open trip this March. The Miami Open is the, one of the largest tennis tournaments in the world outside of the four Grand Slams. During this trip, we're not only gonna attend, attend the Miami Open, but we're gonna do a University of Miami College tour, and we will be hitting at the Delray Tennis Center with some folks over there. Programs like this are not made possible without community leaders, and I really wanna recognize two of those leaders tonight, David and Ruth Waranker. They've supported this ambassador initiative for five years, unwavering, when it started as a small group of just five kids, to what it is now. And the ambassador program really is the keystone to all of our other programs. We need those kids to go out and volunteer and help our coaches on site. David and Ruth have committed this year to the largest gift that we've ever received from an individual donor of $25,000, which fully supports this ambassador program, and not just training at the center, but all those intangibles. The off-court life skills, the mentoring, college prep counseling, and the special trips that we're gonna take. So just once again, thank you, David and Ruth Waranker, for your five years of support, and this year, an outstanding gift that we're truly grateful for.
Thank you, Nick. It's always good to see those kids, too, at the Razor Racket. It's nice to see them recognized there also.
Thank you for sharing that.
Ricardo, we have anybody else?
I have no one else signed up to speak.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak on anything? All right. Seeing, seeing none, then I'm going to. Oh, okay. Seeing none, then I'm going to, this is a usually a portion of the agenda for the mayor. And.
Mr. President, if I could, I'd like to, because we are not having a meeting on the 27th of March, it is legislative days. There's a special commemorative date coming up, and I've been asked by the DAR to reach out to the mayor. Like to add an emergency item to her presentation list today.
All right. And so, Mayor.
A motion?
Do we, do we need a motion? Motion to second to approve a mayor's emergency item. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously, and I will turn it over to the mayor.
You're welcome. Whereas the Vietnam War was one of the longest military conflicts in United States history, with more than 2.7 Americans serving in Vietnam between 1955 and 1975. And whereas more than 58,000 service members made the ultimate sacrifice, and many returning, returning Vietnam War veterans faced challenges upon their return home, enduring hardships and demonstrating extraordinary courage and resilience. And whereas the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 was signed into law by U.S. President Donald J. Trump, designating March 29th as National Vietnam War Veterans Day to honor those who served. And whereas March 29th, 1973, marks the date when the United States Military Assistance Command Vietnam was disestablished. The U.S. Combat, the last U.S. Combat troops departed Vietnam and the final prisoners of war held in Vietnam were released, making this an especially significant day for recognition. And whereas National Vietnam War Veterans Day joins other important military observances, including Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Veterans Day, as an opportunity for Americans to express their gratitude to those who served during the Vietnam War era. And whereas the.
Ekabuxasa chapter.
There you go, chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. A partner of the United States of America Vietnam War Commemoration Committee is dedicated to honoring and recognizing Vietnam Vet, Vietnam War veterans in our area through special ceremonies and commem- events. And whereas the City of Zephyr Hills seeks to express its profound appreciation for the service valor and sacrifice of all Vietnam War veterans and their families. Now, therefore, I, Melanie Bar Monson, Mayor of the City of Zephyr Hills, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 25, as Vietnam Veterans Day in the City of Zephyr Hills, and encourage all residents to honor and recognize their contributions, the contributions of Vietnam War veterans to our community and nations.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the DAR, I'd like to accept this. One more. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, next we have our consent agenda items. We have three tonight. Can be voted on in entirety, or any council member can pull one for further discussion. I have a motion.
Make a motion that we pass all three agenda items.
Motion to second to approve all three consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed unanimously. All right, moving on to our business items. Business item 2.1, and I will turn it over to City Attorney here.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, um, 2.1 is the second reading of ordinance number 1498-25. Ordinance of the city is proposing amendment to the city's zoning map designation, changing the zoning designation from City R4 multifamily residential to City C1 neighborhood commercial for approximately 8.52 acres of real property identified with parcel ID 262521000000700000, providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing.
All right, I'm gonna open a public hearing, and we'll let Todd give a, an analysis for this here. This is the second reading, and then I'll allow for citizen comments whenever Todd is finished.
Good evening, Todd Vandenberg, Planning Director. I'll provide a little refresher on this item. Business items, 2.1, 2.2, both are similar, but towards the same project. But we'll start with the rezoning, which is item number 2.1. And I'll give a little refresher on that, and then we do have Len Johnson. He's with us tonight in the audience. Attorney for the, the applicant, and I believe David Waranker and Cody Brightwell, the civil engineer, may also be online. So I, I think y'all are familiar with the property. It's on the east side, north side of 301, east side of 30, on the east side and north of Consec Road and right across from Terrabella. As the city attorney mentioned, a little over eight and a half acres. They're proposing a rezoning from R4, which is multifamily residential, to C1 neighborhood commercial. And just to kind of rehash a little bit of the, the prior time we took this through, we, we talked about how, as a precursor to moving forward with this rezoning, we did a visioning workshop. And that was held with the, the Planning Department staff, Planning Commission, and City Council. And then I believe it was our, the consensus from the, the council after that vision workshop that there seemed to be a consensus of moving forward with the rezoning, the conditional use, with the understanding that, from that visioning workshop, Tammy Brand and myself are working on a new future land use category, which we're in the process of continuing to work on. You saw kind of very conceptual early draft of that. And then I talked with Tammy today, and I, I suggested, you know, before the next step of taking that to the Planning Commission, where I suggested we should meet with the property owners in that planning area. So that, that's kind of the intent on that new future land use category that we've talked about. Finishing up the draft on that and then reaching out to the property owners, and then that next step would be to take it to the Planning Commission and City Council, and then the transmittal process, of course, with the state. I did wanna, as you see in the agenda memo, a couple of points to clarify after that first meeting. The entire, what we're referring to would be is a Zephyr Knoll future land use category would be for the entire area in that planning area map that we looked at, which would include this hotel property. If you decide to move forward with the rezoning and the conditional use tonight, they'd be allowed to move forward. But future property owners within this new planning area, within the Zephyr Knoll future land use category, are required to, to come through the city and rezone to PED, Plan Unit Development. And that'll help us guide and monitor the types of uses that go up there. Some general traditional planning elements and practices that, that will be laid out clearly in the future land use category, and even the, the primary and incelerate uses. So we'll have a, a pretty good control over what will be built in that area, a little bit of how it look. So yeah, that's what we talked about, a little background. You also see here a, a note down there that we were kind of looking at one idea of a developer's agreement. We, we had some discussion about uses that we're comfortable with and not comfortable with under the neighborhood commercial, should the hotels not be built. And although they look very promising on going forward, we, myself, the city manager, city attorney, and, and Mr. Johnson here talked about that. And we identified a mechanism in which to formalize how we could do, not a city, but a property owner voluntary deed restriction. And discussions that we had, there's a couple of uses that we talked about, and I think this is something we chatted a little bit about. Part of that vision workshop and the first reading was drive-through, drive-through restaurants, car washes, and smoke shops. There was some discussion about gas stations, but gas stations aren't allowed in neighborhood commercial zoning. So those are the uses that we talked about, and, you know, if we, if we do that voluntary deed restriction, the applicant's attorney is here to sort of confirm that they'll move forward with formalizing if the other items go forward this night. So that's what we've talked about doing to address those couple of particular uses that we, we talked about. So that, that's probably the presentation for just the rezoning, then the, of course, the conditional use resolution with conditions is the next item.
Okay, Ricardo, is anyone signed to speak to this item?
No, I don't have anyone signed up to speak.
Okay. Seeing anybody? All right, then, council, I'll turn it over to you guys if you have any questions or comments. Go ahead.
I was a little concerned. The vision that we all have for is, I think we're all on board on that, you know. That, I think, I think we certainly need the hotels. I think we'd like the way it was. My concern was that if something happened. My concern was that if something happened, the economy is a little, quite uncertain, in my opinion, right now, as we move forward, that we had the assurances that it would have the same vision that everybody had anticipated, with the landowner being that as well, you know, having that same vision. But I think what you're saying is, we would enter into some type of an agreement where certain uses would be prohibited, and it would run with the land, where if it, if something happened and it did have to be sold, that it would, it would have those restrictions attached to it.
Yeah. The attorneys here would like to have him confirm that, but we talked about that today.
Go ahead.
In the same, I'm there. I have the same, you know, concern that, you know, should something occur where a hotel was not built, this is now property zone C1. So we can't tell them they can't do anything that's in a C1. So the conditions only apply if it's a hotel. Is that right?
That's right.
I mean, and the other conditions, I mean, they'll keep the trees and things like that, but there's permitted uses in a C1 that we may not want there. That's why we had talked about the PUD, and I just, I guess I'm concerned that the whole thing's not a PUD.
Well--
Including that eight acres.
That is the intent, but I thought that the consensus and direction from council was, you know, to move forward with the hotels, but then to remedy that interim period until the new future land use category is in place. And again, future developers, builders will have to apply for rezoning to PUD. We, staff, we went through the C1 permissible uses and came up with those three that, now if we need to have further discussion, we can discuss that, but those are the three uses that we, and again, the gasoline station not permissible or C1. So those were the four uses that we had talked about. The others, at least staff level, didn't have major concerns with.
I don't understand what four uses we--
Well, we got drive-through restaurants, car washes, smoke shops, and then again, we talked about the gas stations, which aren't permissible.
Right. A convenience store is.
Convenience store, neighborhood store--
All right.
--that would be permissible.
But once it's zone C1, how can you tell somebody they can't put a smoke shop there if it's zone that?
Because we're gonna put those under a voluntary deed restriction that the current owner, future owners, aren't allowed to do those particular types of uses.
In that zone?
Within this property, on this property.
It's a voluntary deed restriction by the landowner, not a condition of our resolution?
The deed restriction passes, passes on to a future buyer. And I think on the phone this afternoon, we talked about, there's a, under, on page 76, there's a couple points of clarification. The entire Zephyr Knoll planning area, including the hotel property, would receive the new future land use category. Then elsewhere on that, it says, "The future development would require the landowner to rezone PUD to comply with the Zephyr Knoll FLE intent standards and uses." That's how you're gonna achieve that, is by this, kind of this voluntary deed restriction.
On this particular property, correct?
Okay.
And of course, we spoke last week about this very same concern, that the voluntary conditions that the city attorney had sent out to us last week, and I looked them over. If for some reason, and it could be the economy or other reasons, that is sold, that they would have to abide by those same voluntary conditions, correct?
Well, the conditional use is for the height, 48--
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, I didn't know if this was part of that conditional use or the, you know, those things that were sent out about the voluntary ones that you've worked out. We've had a good working relationship with the developer and his representative, and I think you guys hammered out kind of what we're looking for, but we just want to make sure that, no matter what, that's what we end up with.
We're trying to anticipate unforeseen conditions, those surprises on the back end when we approve something, and then something happens.
Hundred percent. It doesn't move forward.
And that might be an attorney question.
Now, what we're here on is the, what's on the floor is the ordinance, which is the rezoning to C1. As far as the deed restrictions, I think the council for the owner, the applicant, would be happy to confirm that they're gonna place those deed restrictions on at some point. We talked about that today, so I don't doubt that that won't be a problem. But then the other, there's other conditions that'll be in the resolution that'll be business item 2.2, that are tied to not the use as a hotel, but the height. So if there's construction to a certain height, which in this case, I think it's--
48.
Yeah.
There's architectural requirements and some other things.
Then there's certain restrictions that are, or conditions that apply to that based on the resolution tonight. So there's kind of a two-pronged, so right now, what's before council is the rezoning to C1. And with that, you know, they could put anything in that would be permitted under, permissible use under C1, except for the items that they're gonna voluntarily restrict by deed restriction.
And I think that's what councilmen, it's been brought up because of the C1 thing, but I think our concern is, does that, those conditions go with whoever owns the land, if they sell it?
Those run with the land.
Okay.
And that, but that's the, that's the, those three uses, I guess. We talked about four, but one of them doesn't really, can't, it's not permissible use anyway. So it's really three uses that they're voluntarily restricting under C1. Those run with the land. Then the conditional use resolution applies more conditions, but they're only applied to the property if they construct something in excess of the height that is permitted under the current code. It would, so if they give four stories on a hotel, then it would, it would apply and attach to the property, you know.
Go ahead, Councilman Proctor.
Well, you answered my question. That would protect us from them putting those three things that we don't want, and you said one of the other ones is not allowed, anyway.
Gas station's not permissible use under C1, just convenience stores, but no gas.
Well, and I know it's coming up on the next thing, but we're kind of discussing it right now. It'll save us the trouble, but there was a few things in there specific to the hotels, too, that were--
That's in the resolution coming up.
Right, and that will still be covered the same way. Okay.
I have a question about the resolution, if I can ask it, because I don't understand this. Under, in the resolution, under the second whereas, it says, "Mid-rise structures, when permitted, may be erected to a height not exceeding 75 feet. If the building is set back from each setback line, at least one additional foot for each additional two feet of building above 30 feet." How does that apply when we've set it zone 48?
That's just showing in the code what, what conditions could be granted, and if they are, what the setback changes are. That's, that's something, that's conditional use up to 75. You know how there's like permissible use and conditional use? But if you look at Section 3 of the actual body of the ordinance, that puts the limitation at 48 feet.
Right. That's what I want, well, I wanted to make sure that the 48 feet was--
Yeah, so the 75 feet is what is considered a conditional, is conditional use under the code, up to 75 feet.
Conditional use.
That, that's the most that council could consider under this particular factual scenario. But we're only, we're only allowing, under this resolution, 48 feet.
But we don't have anything in writing yet about the deed restrictions.
We don't, but we will put it on the record tonight, I believe. That's no problem. And I, we don't anticipate there being any issues getting that done before any permits are pulled.
Anything else from council? Questions?
I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Johnson to come forward if he can, and confirm that those three things will be restricted.
What were the three things?
Car washes, smoke shops, drive-through restaurants.
So Len Johnson, the Johnson Pope Law Firm, 14552 Mount Zion Road, Date City, represent the applicant. And yes, I want to confirm, we had, we've had several discussions about this, including one this afternoon. I told staff I'd be happy to put it on the record. We will not apply for smoke shops, drive-throughs, car wash, and will, I'll work with Matt to get a deed restriction that will run with the land, so it'll be binding on future owners that limits those items, that we cannot have those, even though we're C1.
That means we could still have a tattoo store or parlor, a laundromat, anything else in there that we may not--
Anything else that's under C1, yes.
Okay.
Question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments? I'm going to close the public hearing, and then we can consider the--
Mr. President, I move approval of this item.
Oh, second.
I have a motion to second to approve ordinance number 1498-25 on a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Todd?
Um, 2.2 is resolution number 847-25, resolution of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, related to height, proven a conditional use to exceed the height limitations of the C1 neighborhood commercial zoning district on parcel number 262521400070040, providing conditions, finding conformity with Conference of Plan and Land Development Code and providing an effective date. This is a public hearing.
All right.
And I will ask the city clerk to bring up the Exhibit A. We've been negotiating the conditions back and forth for, up until a few hours before this meeting, so this is an updated version of Exhibit A that's gonna be a little different than what was put in the packet in the last week.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing, and turn it over to Todd, then.
Yeah, so you've heard, same piece of property, 8.52 acres. You know, there, the proposed two hotels that have been discussed would exceed the Land Development Code maximum height of 30 feet, so that requires them to apply for and receive a conditional use to exceed the maximum height allowed by code. As we've discussed, the maximum height that's been agreed to is 48 feet. There are conditional use criteria and standards in the city's land development code, that's Part 11.10.00. And that was, we reviewed those conditions in conjunction with the visioning workshop that we did. And after completing the workshop and hearing how the Planning Commission and council felt, staff is of the opinion that those standards and conditional use criteria and following through with the new future land use code and what we've been talking about tonight meets those standards of the Land Development Code. Yeah, these are the, as the city attorney alluded to, the applicant came up with the first part, where we discussed a full-service restaurant along with conference banquet facilities, meeting spaces, so that's built into a condition. The items below that, A through E, have to do with, what we did was, I pulled up an example of a nice hotel on State Route 56, Hilton Garden Inn, actually, shared that with David and Len, and we talked about some, some elements of that example, which we built into A through E here.
So Todd, could you read that? Because they don't, I don't think anybody has this in front of them, and so we can't read it here, so I want everybody to know what they're agreeing to today.
So those architectural-related items are having more than one color, multiple exterior primary surface paint colors. B, architectural and design accutments and various construction to break up the monotony of the standard construction. So it can't just be a four-corner rectangular box, they gotta have some variation and break up of the monotony of, of that. Same thing with the roof line. You know, you can have cornices where it's just a flat roof, but the example I shared with them had a break above the roof line, too, of the cornices or other architectural elements that break up that roof line. Building frontage, architectural offsets. Again, the, there can be some offsets in the front facade of the building, and that could be the entire building where you have those offsets, different architectural and design elements. And we talked about a covered portico drive-through entrance, you know, keep you out of the rain, another element that you generally will see nicer hotels. Again, number two is the maximum height, 48 feet. We've talked about that already. Items three and four have to do with access that were provided by Mr. Johnson, and these have to do with a proposed access that's gonna be along the northern property boundary of the hotels. That begins at the Wire Ranch Townhomes, which is a little adjoining to the east, but there's gonna be a joint access that goes all the way to 301. And there's some language in here that talks about that arrangement between the two uses and the property owner. I don't know if I need to provide any more details on that, but if so, I probably ask--
Essentially, I can jump in. Essentially, what it is, is they're gonna, they're, part of the condition is that they have a joint planning and use of a common entrance to get to the townhomes and the property and the hotels, and same with stormwater, to make the most efficient use of the real estate. They're gonna have a joint stormwater plan, and the conditions are that, you know, they'll work them out amongst themselves about how that's gonna be constructed and maintained between the two owners, but they'll provide us those agreements prior, you know, as part of the conditions here.
Number five was, we talked about tree preservation. The trees that we've talked about appear to be within the DOT 301 right-of-way. So, but we did go ahead and leave that condition in there, just so, you know, we'll be aware of that as the future development comes through to try our best efforts to save those trees. We also included a perimeter type C landscape buffer. That's an enhanced buffer we had talked about, that'd be around the perimeter of the hotels. And the other thing we've talked about is a trail. That came out of the little exercise that the three groups went through. We talked about a trail running through the spine of this planning area, could potentially connect into a park, should that be done at the southern end of the property that was conceptualized. So, you know, what we're saying here is that if feasible, you know, of course, get to the final engineering design of both Wire Ranch Townhomes, which is already, has approved construction plans, but as we move forward with the hotel, if there's an opportunity to look at that, that, that trail running through the middle, we'll try to do that. Or if there's other possible sensible connections where the, if it's a hotel and Wire Ranch Townhomes, where they could connect that trail, if we can make that trail happen. Lot of unknowns with that trail, but we kind of liked the idea that was brought up during the visioning exercise to try to make that happen. So that's why, why it's in there.
Okay.
Todd, these changes, were they done this afternoon? Is that why we didn't get a--
Well, essentially, very small tweaks.
Except for the new ones.
Yeah, you can see I have to cross through an underline, and what we did is, we renamed the Greenway Trail to Walking Trail, so nothing substantive changed on that, but we just renamed that. And the other one was, instead of preservation of trees along 301, we just relabeled that to, "Property owner shall use its best efforts to preserve trees along 301." And again, that was discussion about trees not being on the private property there, but what appeared to be in the DOT right-of-way. So, you know, there may be instances where an ingress egress point has to come into the property on this access point we're talking about, a tree or two may have to come out on that. So, but we're, we wanted to leave it in there, just so we're gonna be aware of that when we move forward. And when we move forward, we're going to try to preserve as many of those trees as we can. That was it. Other than a couple grammatical errors, nothing else changed.
Okay.
Answer your question though, yeah. They, they were finalized at around three forty-five this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think Billy was trying to print copies. I apologize, they should have been, should have gotten hard copies. I didn't realize you weren't. And I just emailed it to everybody.
Mr. President, thank you. Um, a couple of things. So, um, I want to make sure that I understand, uh, what Councilman Spina's objections are. And one of the things I, for me, I'm a little concerned. When we did the visioning session, we talked about this being a PUD. One of the reasons why we're not insisting on it being a PUD today. And the PUD would have, would have addressed a lot of these things that we were talking about, the, the greenway and, and that sort of thing. Now, you know, the greenway implies something a little bit wider than a walkway. So, you know, these are the kind of things, we really wanted that to go pretty much, you know, be kind of this green spine between these, you know, higher density developments and the, you know, residential kind of views. The other thing is that, um, is that the, you know, the reason, my understanding is the reason that we are not, the PUD is not, is that it would have taken longer and we've already delayed perhaps this developer, um, from being able to, to move forward with the project. So I just want to make sure that I understand that this is the reason why that we're approving, uh, that we're approving the, the, these separately.
Yeah, I, I think again, the intent of what we're doing is, one, we're, we are moving forward with the new future land use category. Uh, you know, that, that's going to take time to do. I, I would say we're a month or so from hopefully having a good draft and meeting with property owners. And we got to take it through planning commission, city council, has to go to the state. So I, I, I estimate that's four months away, uh, realistically of, of having that accomplished and built into the comp plan. And, and the other thing we, yeah, I mean, I think we tried to address the comments and concerns that have been brought up by doing the voluntary deed restrictions and to address some of the other comments, uh, into the resolution that, that we heard.
So D would have eliminated any of the other concerns that we have because they would then be required to do the, the, the hotel the way that it's designed.
Well, it does open up the opportunity to negotiate.
Okay.
Again, would, would it be, we, we, we identified the height. We've talked about enhancing the buffering. We're going to try to do that greenway trail and we got these architectural elements in there. So, I mean, I'm not sure really exactly what else we would build into the PUD if.
The property is too valuable to put a strip center with a, with a, with a, uh, tattoo parlor and a laundromat in. I guess that's, that's really, you know, I think that's what my concern is, is that we've approved this, but we want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding as to our expectation of what we're going to get at the end.
But that's why I voted against it, because you can't guarantee that.
It's a PUD, right?
Right, but it's not a PUD, it's a C1. So you can say we have good intentions, but if something goes south, you could end up with a tattoo parlor and a, uh, laundromat on probably one of the nicest pieces of property left to develop. So I don't know. That's why I voted against it. That's my right as a council member to do as I do it without a justification.
Thank you.
Um, well, I'm going to see if we have any citizens first. Ricardo, has anybody signed up to speak to this item?
I have no one signed up to speak to this item.
Okay. Seeing none, then I will turn over to council for comments and, and I know Councilwoman Wilkinson, you. Okay.
Um, right, and, and, and I understand, uh, Eric, the intention of this, and I understand reservation on it not coming to fruition. Um, and I'm just going based on, we're trying to tighten the loop. We're trying to close the loops, loophole of, of something else happening by restricting some things. I, I do think there's a, a value in the land that maybe would be exceeded by some of the, some of the, um, uses that we didn't really want. Staff feels comfortable with it, so I, I, I would move, move forward with it. And, and based on the prior relationship with the developer, you know, now, we know things can change. We, we, I, we understand that, but we're just kind of, and the other thing is, we certainly need a hotel here. I mean, it's a use that we need. We're not guaranteed it's going to happen, but everything that we've been told indicates that it is going to move forward, so.
And the applicant, Mr. Warnaker, is online. If you want to ask him any specific questions about some of these topics.
Well, in.
Hi, guys. Do you need me to swear if this one in or, or to start speaking?
If you just give your name and address.
Sure. Uh, David Warnaker, eighteen seventy Beach Ridge Road, Celebration, Florida, three four seven four seven. I am the, as you know, the developer of this property. Uh, uh, you want to add a deed restriction for, uh, tattoo parlors and anything else, that's fine with me. Uh, I, this is going to be a beautiful hotel property, two hotels. I never really asked for the C zoning. I believe that's something was requested of me to be put on. I believe originally was a PUD zoning. I was just following through what the recommendations were of staff. So fully intend to do nothing but hotels on this property. It's something, as everyone knows, is desperately needed, you know, in this, in the city and it's been, and avoided. Um, I don't know if you understand how property, uh, hotels are built today. Um, but if you think it's the Marriott Corporation going to be, you know, the builder, that's not how it works. They work with, these hotel companies work with developers such as myself to actually, obviously obtain the entitlements to build the structure. But also they're going to be looking to me to build and own the building and actually enter into a long-term lease, um, agreement with the various hotel company. In this particular property, and you, you want to look this up, we are looking at two new products from the Hyatt Hotel Corporation. One is told the caption model. The other is the centric model. These are two new types of, um, hospitality for the, you know, the years that we are right now. You know, today's, today's, uh, traveler, what they're looking for. There's a third product called Hyatt Studios that I'm considering. All of these products are state-of-the-art type designs. They require a minimum of a hundred units, excuse me, a hundred rooms, uh, but most of them average about a hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty rooms per building. They're considered upscale, moderate to upscale type hotels. All have restaurants, all have catering facilities, banquet facilities, exercise facilities, pools, clubhouse, you know, full amenities that you'd expect. I think they'd be perfect in the city limits here. That is all I want to develop. That's all I want to own. My wife and I want to do this ourselves outside of CBD, um, you know, and it'd be a nice parting legacy as a last project I can do in the city. Um, it'll keep me tied to the city for a while, as you know. Um, but that's all I want to do on the property. If you feel concerned about any other restrictions, uh, tattoo parlors, whatever else I heard, you couldn't do it on the price of this land anyway. I mean, that would be impossible. And there's certainly other locations in the city that have the zoning and would allow that type of use today in a, one of the strip centers that, that is built. But that is not the intention. So I don't know how we could perfect that understanding. Um, I understand totally, you know, Councilman Spina's concerns. I listened to him and he, he's absolutely right. You know, what happens if, you know, uh, the market collapses and, you know, you have a piece of land and what do you do with it? So if you want to restrict me further or it further, uh, I'm fine with it.
All right, uh, thank you, David. And, uh, you know, I just got to say that I appreciate the efforts of the planning department, the developer, developers, uh, um, representative, the council, the, and our planning department. We've, we've discussed this, we've had workshops, we've tried to do the best we can. I understand, uh, Steve's concerned too. I mean, we're kind of, but it sounds like developers even, uh, willing to kind of give us some of those other conditions that we could, this is just a first reading that maybe we could have.
This is the only reading.
Oh, this is the only reading for the resolution, okay. Um, so I don't know, I mean, if that's something that could be worked out.
Does that need to be added in?
Well, whatever council's pleasure is.
Well, I really appreciate the fact that Mr. Warnaker is offering to.
He was willing to do so.
Do that. I mean, that would kind of put a lot of our concerns to rest, especially with those certain things that we did not want there.
I think the tattoo parlor example.
Laundry mat you mentioned, right.
And laundry mat would both be more appropriate in the deed restriction because they apply.
Right.
Land now at C1, not if they build to forty eight feet, because that's when these conditions come into play.
Right.
Oh, by the way, when I say that, you know, there are actually laundry facilities in the hotels, right? I, I got to be careful, you know, coin laundry. All right.
Yeah, maybe we'll put independent laundry mats.
Yeah, okay, right, of course.
Right.
Looks, the deed restrictions, we still have some flexibility on, so really, we just need to approve.
That's all voluntary by the developer, but, you know, that was part of the negotiations. I haven't talked to council for Mr. Warnaker about these new ones yet, so I don't, you know, it's kind of been put on the spot, but.
Well, I'm willing, it's me again, David. I, I'm willing to add, you know, the tattoo parlor and the laundry mat, you know, or if you think of something else that you don't want there. Can we look at that right now and see what's permitted and eliminate it and I'll agree to it right tonight?
Um, well, and then of course, as Councilwoman Wilkinson had, uh, said earlier, the reason this is even, uh, at this spot is because we're trying to move this project forward, um, rather than waiting for the entire, uh, area to be, because that would just put them in a, you know, even further behind. And as Councilman Smith said, we need the product in this town right now, so.
And construction costs aren't going down.
Yeah, they're not going down, that's for sure, so.
We want them.
They're insane.
Yeah, the Hyatt Studios is beautiful.
All right, well.
Well, and if there's, uh, Councilman Spina, if you'd like, I, I can certainly meet with you if there's anything you want to, in addition to what.
X through here, when this was pro, when we were talking after that workshop, we had talked about creating a new.
New zoning category.
District category. And those were the things that I were marking to, to exclude from that. If you go to PUD, we don't need the commercial one A or whatever you wanted to call it. So, um, fine, but.
I did not, but I'm, I'm getting ready to unless somebody else has another comment. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and, uh, I'll turn it to, over to the council for.
I move approval of this item, and we also understand that there's a separate agreement, separate from this item, that, that's going to, uh, talk about restricted uses on this property that are deed restricted and run with the land. So I'm approving it just as we understand there's another document to be, to be brought forward.
And, and we have on record the, uh, developer agreeing to.
That won't come back before you, that's just.
Correct.
We're getting their commitment tonight.
Right.
That they're going to voluntarily restrict those, you know, sometime before we start pulling permits.
Right.
And I will second, uh, Councilman Smith's, uh, motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Mr. President, before we vote, can I ask Todd one question? Todd, on the other, not that this has anything to do with it, and I don't want to tie this meeting up, but in the future, any of the other properties that are connected to this area, can we do it as a PUD?
Yes, that's, that's the intent. We're going to create the new future land use category.
Okay.
Properties will rezone to PUD, correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number eight four seven dash two five on the first reading. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes four to one. Thank you, Todd. All right, and I want to thank the council too, for, and council and mayor and the planning commission for the, the efforts and, and the work we put into this in addition to the applicant's, uh, uh, representative who wants to speak right now.
Yes, thank you. If I, if I could just say thank you to the staff because they've been great. And we, we have worked on this for a long time. They've spent a lot of time going back a year. They've spent a lot of time going back three hours and we, we appreciate their diligence and.
Yeah, and we, we certainly do appreciate planning, what all they've done with this too. All right, so, uh, that's it for the business items. And we're on to mayor announcements.
I do not have.
Good night, everybody, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Um, city manager.
Just a reminder that we have a workshop, uh, next week, March nineteenth, on Wednesday evening at five PM. CRA master plan, uh, update and the parks master plan update.
The date on that again?
March nineteenth. It's Wednesday. Matt's birthday, so I don't know if he'll be here.
Bring, yeah, bring a cake.
From Big Four O.
Oh, it's a rough one. It's downhill.
What's that? Yeah.
Downhill now. Five.
Five o'clock.
Yes.
Is that all you have, Billy? Just that?
Yes, sir, that's all.
That's at five, too.
Right.
Yes.
Five o'clock.
I'd like to say at current.
Which time should we, uh?
I think Gail said two hours.
We're, we're anticipating two hours, one hour for each item.
And I had spoken to city manager and I think we want to have some kind of a little agenda that we're going to stick to, a pretty strict, before it done turned into a four-hour meeting.
Yes. Starts at five.
Right, so that brings us to the city attorney that who will be turning forty next week. Um, and, uh, you have any announcements of anything you want us to bring for a present?
Um, yeah, my permission to skip the workshop. Uh, that's all, I, I don't have any announcements.
All right, city council, I'll start with Councilman Spina.
Uh, I would like to s- schedule a workshop in April to do a pre-budget, um, wishlist or needs list. Well, I don't have a date in mind, we'll have to work on that, but I'd like to have that set up.
I have some date exclusions, if you don't mind, between the seventeenth and the, um, seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. I'll be unavailable.
I also have one, but it's the first week, I think.
You said the seventeenth? The council meetings are the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, right?
I planned it, so.
Well, we have, we would have the CRA, the second meeting, so maybe the, maybe the fourteenth, we could.
All right, we'll let the city manager work on that potential date if it sounds like it should be good for everyone, since it's a regular council meeting night anyways.
I planned my vacation so I didn't miss a meeting. Okay.
Vacation?
Well, it's a vacation, I'm going to see my kid, yeah.
So we're good with the fourteenth?
Fourteenth.
I, uh, I'm also going to be gone, leading up to the fourteenth, so.
Fourteenth is good, though?
Yeah, the fourteenth is good, I'll be back for the.
We'll just do it after regular council meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
On that way, the, you know, staff doesn't necessarily have to be here and stuff like that, because we're just going over some of our internal stuff.
Um, six, seven or oh PM.
You can bring a cake that night too, Billy.
Yeah, all right.
All right, uh, is that all you had, Steve, or do you have anything else? Okay.
I don't have anything today.
All right, Councilwoman Wilkinson.
Nothing for me.
And on down to Councilman Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I had sent out an email because I had gone down to look at the Zephyr Creek shed to see, and it, it's got a lot of debris in it. We're less than ninety days away from the start of hurricane season. And I talked with the city manager a little bit. We've, we've got to do something to try and get that thing cleaned up. I mean, and we've only got ninety days.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, I, I, I think that he's trying to work with the Pasco County. The other thing, and I hate, I, I mean, I hate to add a workshop, but I didn't think it might, I think it might be wise maybe to have something in May to talk about our disaster preparedness plan, you know, it, yeah, just to keep it in, in everybody's mind. Because you, you go around there and, and it's unbelievable to think where the water was, you know? So, I mean, I, I, I would leave it up to staff if we could do something in May, um, and maybe have all the department heads come and just kind of say, okay, what, what are the needs? What, what can we do? How do we help make sure that our employees have time to get prepared for the storm, not only? What do they need? What do we do during the event, after the event? So I just thought it wouldn't hurt to be a little proactive on it, so.
No, and actually, I thi, I think we. No, and actually, I think, I think we, we even discussed the briefing from what, what we did. And that leads right into that and what, and, you know, like you said, employees, I'm glad you brought up employees because that was one of the things that I would talk to city manager about, how do we address some of those things too? So I think, I think it's a great idea for both things. And as far as the cleaning up, I mean, that's going to probably be law at the end of this session. And so we might as well go ahead and start on it now because it's going to have to be reporting it and things like that. So it's great ideas. You have anything else or?
That's it.
So the date, our council, council meeting dates in May are what exactly? The 12th and, let's see.
Yeah, we could do it, if we could do it after a council meeting, that would be fine. It might be a little long. But maybe we can, maybe we can make the items.
I think that's important.
Something that the city managing kind of like, again, start looking for something because you'll know what you need to get together for us also.
And in advance, for example, if the department heads create like a list, these are the things that, these are lessons learned. Here's what we would like to have going forward.
Right.
And if, if each of the directors did that, we had it in, in, in advance, then we could address those pretty quickly during the, during the conversation.
Well, and I, I had a good conversation today, probably longer than I should have. Took Billy's time up.
Took, I talked him off the ledge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but it's kind of like getting ready, like when in soccer, we would try and think about every situation that would happen in a game and you practice every situation. And then when you're in the middle of it, it's like, oh, we've done this 10 times, you know, it's not a big deal. So, yeah.
Right. Yeah, same thing like the police and the fire do with training. Just got to be, so when you go into a situation, it's, you're, you already know how to react.
Right.
Need to review our storm drainage plans. And we need to highlight or point out the drainage areas that impact the city that are outside the city to make sure the county is working with.
Right.
Because a lot of what you were looking at is outside the city.
Right. Yeah, the water doesn't stop at the city limit, you know.
Right.
Oh, great ideas. And, you know, hopefully we don't have to worry about it for another 100 years, but.
I hope not.
The possibility is it could happen again this year. So appreciate that stuff. And I just, my one thing is, and it has to do with what's still up on the screen there, and this is for Mike, if he's still, still awake. We're getting ready. When are we going to redo this anyways?
So we're having an issue. The contractor is ready to go. The, the sound crew has already delivered, well, has already delivered the new mics. Or is in the process of delivering the mics. We're working with the, or we're having a hard time working with the cabinet maker. So I know I reached out to them Friday. They were supposed to reach back out to Public Works. I don't know that that happened. Not yet. So I will make another call tomorrow.
Technology wise, we were going to do a couple of things because of elevated floor and stuff like that. But I, and I think I've spoken to you about this before, Mike, but like when that was put up there and then we couldn't, I thought I was the only one that couldn't see it because of my eye surgery. Is there a way, and I know we all want our, our own autonomy on a computer, our computer, so we can look things up where we're going. So I don't want it where we're working off of Ricardo's computer, but there's a way for him to push just like, sometimes the PowerPoints that we see aren't exactly what in our packet and we sort of get lost a little bit. So if there's a way where we can do that, where you can kind of like push that onto our screens. I had something similar to that when I was still teaching school where I could put lessons on all their, all the computer screens. So I just figured looking at something like that too. And it's not for everything. It's just for something new that isn't in our packet, basically, I guess.
People come to meetings.
And they bring a power, they bring a PowerPoint last minute to a meeting and we don't have it. So. Anyways, that's all I have. So if nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.